Ms. Murphy?
Here. The standing pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
101 approval. Any changes?
No approval.
You have 7.01 five-year general fund financial forecast. Is any information I mentioned?
Yes, I'll turn this over to John Carson, who's Executive Director, by name.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to present the five-year forecast. We are a little bit delayed in presenting this. Part of that was our audit went longer than normal, and we wanted to wait till that was done. And then we had a little bit of software issues when trying to get it all loaded, so we apologize. We may have it ready in December, but we are going to do it tonight as part of the budget planning process. So the five-year forecast is used to provide us a roadmap into the future. It helps us really make budget decisions in short term as we consider the long-term impact of that will be. We do look at this at least twice a year. Sometimes we've done it three times a year, but we're on a rotating rotation right now of twice a year where we're giving one winter timeframe. That could be November, December, or we are in January. And then in spring, in context with the upcoming budget approval, we want to show you if this budget is approved, what will the impact be down the road. In the winter, we adjust for enrollment changes because we're using an estimate up to that point until we get to October 1st. We deal with any staffing changes that have occurred over the summer, any new positions that needed to be added due to sections or special ed needs or any of those other types of situations. And then we incorporate those formal budget adjustments that we had recently approved from October 31st. In the spring, we adjust for settled employment contracts. Right now, we have our teachers and our principals settled for this current year and the next school year. But as we go forward out of this current school year, we have none of our other groups settled at this point. So the five-year forecast is using estimates as to what it's going to cost for all of our other positions. But we have worked in what we believe we know for principals and teachers. And then we make any adjustments through April 30th, and again, we put in the budget for next year. So here are the main underlying assumptions within the model that we're looking at. We do assume the state legislature will keep providing a 2% increase out to the future. That has been met at least for the last five years in a row, they've been able to do a 2% per year increase, and we know that that's guaranteed for next year. We are assuming that the voter-approved referendum of $776 will continue to be in place, and will continue to increase with inflation a little bit each year, and that will be given in the forecast through 2026. So we would need to go out for a vote then if we choose to renew that either in the fall of 20... Let's see, I think that'd be the fall of '24 or '25. functional revenue now of $724 per pupil unit. And then we also assume that restricted funding such as grants, donations, and other restricted dollars will cover the exact amount of expenditures that go with those dollars. So there's not a mismatch, I guess, there revenues and expenditures. And then on the expenditure side of the budget, we're estimating that our staff will receive 2.5% increases inclusive of salaries, benefits, EPS, Lanes, whatever. The costs won't go above 2.5% per year for the next several years, and that we would include at least 10 FTE of new teachers within 1920, and we kind of carry those forward into 2021 and beyond as well. We're estimating 3% for inflation of other types of expenses like utilities, capital, supplies, contractors, bus transportation. We have a guaranteed contract in place right now for 3% increases over the next four years. And then any leases or debts, we work those in at what the actual payment schedule says they should be. So here's how it breaks down. The current year is the year we're operating in. That's the column on the left. We have $239.6 million in revenues in the general fund with $246.4 million of expenditures. The reason expenditures are higher than revenues is because we are approved to spend the carryover balances from last year, monies that were left over, unspent. We've rolled those in. When we do future budget projections, we take those one-time pen-of-use dollars, those carryover dollars, we remove them from the forecast and just kind of assume the ongoing recurring 21 forward. So if everything goes as planned, we end up with $20.8 million in the assigned fund balance, and that, if expressed as a percentage, is 8.5%. That's one of the higher points we've been on the last few years, and is above school board policy of 6.0%. So if we let everything kind of roll forward next year with what we know, with the revenue changes that are worked into the budget, and we assume all those expenditures carry on as is, there would be a slight mismatch of $1.2 to $1.3 million we need to be spending out of our fund balance next year if we don't make any adjustments to the budget that we have right now. And that wouldn't be detrimental to our financial position. Our assigned fund balance would drop to 10%, we'd go down to 8.4%. The problem is if you do that, and then that happens then the next year, the year after that, and the year after that, eventually the expenditures are growing faster than the revenues, and you can't keep managing that. You will go below the fund balance policy by '22-23. So here are the key points in the five-year forecast. Again, we assume 2% growth on the revenue. We know that's guaranteed for next year. Beyond that, there needs to be a law change to make that official for years beyond the '21 school year. So we're assuming it, but it's not written in law, but that will happen. 2.5% for staff pay and benefit increases. Again, that's our assumption. That's what we're using as a point because we don't have settled union contracts and employment agreements beyond the teachers and the principals' next school year. So we have to make an estimate for that. And we have to sit down, and we have to negotiate with everybody on that. The '20-21 forecast, we assume 10 new teachers, but beyond that, we haven't worked in new staffing. So that's something we're trying to get our arms around and try to figure out how do we work that in in '22 and beyond. And then also, we have not assumed new costs for the '23 school year related to new overhead, new utilities, new types of general fund expenditures that are going to come with opening up brand-new school buildings. We're going to get that worked into the next forecast when we bring that in to the spring so you can start to plan now for what will it look like a couple of years when those things are opening up. I think that's the end of the prepared remarks. If you have any questions on kind of how it's looking right now.
Yes. It's more of a comment than a question, and that is you were talking about our operating referendum. And I know there was a push last year in the legislature. Hopefully, there will be a push again that once the district has passed an operating referendum, it's done. We don't have to come back to the voters and ask for the approval. Hopefully, it will be retroactive, but I'm not going to hold my breath on that. So if any of you are interested in taking this up with our legislators, please feel free. Maybe we'll have a committee say.
Under your key points, you talk about the new overhead cost to the district not assumed in these projections. Are there also additional revenues?
Yes. Those are possibly already assumed in there because we assume we will keep growing at, you know, about 100 to 200 kids a year, depending on which year it is. So those are already worked in there. What we don't know is what's the impact of opening up brand-new shiny schools? Will that pull some kids who have chosen to enroll back into our district? Will we have other growth we're not assuming? So there could be even further revenues in there.
Mr. Carlson? Yes, our goal tonight is just to share with you the process we use to develop the budget that we bring to you in the end of May. It is not a couple-month process. It's actually, as you see tonight, it started a few months ago already, and we kind of try to bring you familiar with how the process we use to develop the document that we shared with you today. As soon as John switches it on the computer, we will pull those slides up.
Feel free to study amongst yourselves or something.
Can you give me your favorite line item from the budget out of the how many thousands of lines? Identify one line number.
Let's see. Board is under...
I'll just reiterate, just taking some time, what I sent out to board members in preparation for this meeting. This is really about staffing allocation and very high level. But if we have questions, maybe they'll be able to be answered tonight, maybe they won't. If it's not, no harm will follow. We'll put them on a list and circle back and get those taken care of. This is sort of a new discussion for us, newer discussion for us. And so I think we, I'll speak for myself, appreciate the opportunity to kind of hear about the planning process for staffing.
All right. Here we go. So as Superintendent said, we have been working on the budget already. We started back in July. That's the kind of first starting point of a new budget year is to enter information about the district into the state's levy information system. So we have to provide some demographics, some costs, and other things that MBE needs to review, and then ultimately, they put that onto the levy document that we bring to you in September. So you get to see the preliminary levy in September. And by the end of September, you need to provide or approve the preliminary final levy and then report that to the homecoming auditor. Then we spend kind of the next couple of months getting ready. We start talking in Cabinet, in our accounting department, about how are we going to handle the budgeting process? We start looking at what did we do last year, what things are we thinking about changing for the next year. But that's more the quiet part of the budgeting season, it's not November, December timeframe. It starts getting a little bit busier around now because we need to start locking in some decisions about how we're going to staff the schools for next year. And then we start holding staffing meetings with our principals in February. We hold two rounds of staffing meetings, so that can take us into March, and we try to get that done by spring break. Then around spring break or shortly thereafter, we're working diligently within the accounting department to get everything summed up, put together, and get all that supporting material and really dial in on what the true budget presentation is going to look like and see where we land with all the decisions that have been made so we can bring it to the school board to talk about. Then after we get final budget approval from the school board in that June-July timeframe, we're doing, we're getting people set up for payroll for the next year. We're looking at account coding, just doing a lot of work behind the scenes. October-November, we start looking at the first set of budget adjustments. We look at the five-year forecast again. We do that again in January, February. April-May, we do that again. And then we finally have an audit a year after the budget year has closed. So from start to finish, if you look at that, it's like July of 19 to September of 21. It's almost a two-and-a-half-year process to work a whole budget cycle. Now, there's, I counted up 14 different checkpoints where we come to the school board and officially talk about the budget, and that doesn't include the month-to-month reports that we're sending through Consent Agenda that you're approving, acknowledging the different expenditures that have come through. So again, September 17th is the first time we talked with you about the budget at the preliminary levy briefing. And we followed that up on October 1st with approval. We had December 3rd where we had the truth and taxation hearing, and we allowed for public comment. December 10th, you approved the levy, and then here we are at January 14th, kind of getting an initial conversation going about what will the budget include, what might it not include, and different input kind of soliciting at this point. Further checkpoints that are coming, on February 18th, we'll plan to bring enrollment projections so you can kind of see forward-looking, how are we going to be looking for our best estimates on student numbers? And then at May 26th is when we plan to bring the proposed budget to you in a study session. That would come before you again, June 2nd, to have any further conversations. And then ideally, we'd have an approval on the night of June 16th so that we can legally start operating on July 1st. And then that's not the end of it. We will come back in around December 1st to do budget adjustments, March 2nd, June 1st, and then we'll bring the audit to you in November and December of 21. Any questions kind of about, high level, about the timeline? I think if you've been on the board, you've kind of seen the cycle repeat itself. I think it's, you know, at any one time, we can have up to three budget years going. We're closing down one, we're operating in the current, and we're planning for the next one. This is the quieter part of the year where we only have two budget years open right now. So we're talking about the next one, and we're operating in the real one, but we've kind of set behind us now the old year. It's all audited and closed down. So as far as staffing and budget allocations, since most of our budget is in staffing, it is the biggest conversation we need to have. And this is our third year of using a standardized document. We've put in Board Docs the document that we gave to our principals last year that kind of explained what they would get through the staffing process, that what we were allocating to each school. There would be no question as to if you're this school, you get this, just like all the other schools that are about that same size get for staffing. It provides the base level of staff and supplies, and then above and beyond that, we use our compensatory funds, which are state funds, and then we use our title funds, which are federal funds, to kind of, it's that cherry on top. It stacks on top of what the general fund is already providing through, you know, equality through all of the schools. In last year's model, we had small elementary, medium-sized elementary, and large elementary. We've decided to compress that down this year and rename them and go to Model 1 Elementary School and Model 2 Elementary School. We thought that that would make it a little bit simpler if we made one less category there. We still have our K-8 school. We have our Model 1 and Model 2 middle school that we're planning in staffing around, and then of course, we still have our high school.
John, does the high school include the ALC?
No, it does not. We do not have a standardized staffing model for the ALC since there's just one of those. So we meet with that principal one-on-one. And that's kind of a special funding source anyway, so we talk that through. Staffing process in general, with our elementary schools, we sit down with the principals in an initial staffing meeting, and we look at the enrollments for next year. And we go through section by section, grade by grade, and we say, you're going to have enough teachers to make sure that every class is within school board target. So it's an exhausting process because we, again, we go every building, every grade, talk to every principal about how many teachers they're going to be allocated, as well as the number of paras they're going to get based on the formula. At our secondary levels, we've gone to a ratio-based model, which means we take their enrollment and we divide by a number, and that number tells us how many FTE that site is going to get. And then the principal has a lot of flexibility to say, okay, I've got 66 FTE, for example. I'm going to have 10 art, 10 social studies, 9.8 in English, and so on and so forth. So they have the flexibility to look at how kids have registered up to that point to decide which classes they're going to run, how many FTE they're going to put in each subject area. And it looks different at every high school. They pick different numbers, and it's all based on the number of kids they have signing Just a side note there, to determine what ratio we should use, we have looked at other Big Nine districts, and we've looked at some Twin City metro districts to just kind of make sure, is this a reasonable number of FTE? We also look at our teacher contract ratio because if you would remember, our teacher contract says at the secondary level, you can only see 160 students in a day. So we've gone through all the class rosters. We feel that the ratio that we're giving is adequate to not violate the teacher contract and provide numbers of students in classes that are at the right level. And then we hold a second staffing meeting where then we go through person by person, and if there's adds, then there's openings that get posted, and if we're overstaffed, then there are displacement letters and conversations that are had at that point.
John?
Yes?
Do you have a different formula or a different method for looking at special education needs?
We do. We have a model that we do this, it's a little bit complicated, but we look at the number of special students at the building, and then we take into account the number of minutes of service they each receive, as well as the number of evaluations that they have to complete because every three years, a student needs a new evaluation. So we put all that into a spreadsheet, and then we come up with kind of a range of this number to this number is appropriate for the special ed staff. And that's outside of our casels that are required by state mandate. Those we just, that's out there for us, and that's what we use.
So just kind of piggybacking on what Gina said, so are, when you're looking at the number of students in the building, are special education students included in that total number, since you have a different way of calculating it or not?
We do not include those in the ratio that we put out to the principals.
I guess I was looking at the one person. Thank you.
So are you asking, for example, if mail has 1,800 students, do we subtract 100 special kids out when we do their ratio? We don't do that, no.
Okay.
But to determine the number of special ed teachers and paras at that building, she goes back.
So they're actually getting credit for special ed student for their overall staffing number, but then they also get specific special ed staffing.
What I always like to say is that they're general ed students first.
Yep.
So that I'm going to, as a general ed student...
Okay. That was my question. That was my question.
Absolutely.
And then another question I have is how are you handling the part of the contract where there's a recommended number for teachers to have? So for example, for physical education, there's a recommended number for music, there's a recommended number, I don't know if there are any other categories besides those two, where the, I know the recommended number for music is 180 or has been. I haven't checked it lately. You know, so when I was teaching, it was interpreted as 180 plus a million was still a 1.0, but 179, they started shaving. I'm exaggerating on both, on both ends, and so I was wondering how. And there tended sometimes to be a big, not a big disparity, but a disparity from one school to the next in terms of the number of students, the number of sections. And so not only was it not equitable, it wasn't really equal. I'm assuming you have some kind of a mechanism to deal with that with your principals?
Yeah. Once it gets above a certain number, and I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, I know Century has a very high involvement in their band, that person will receive an overload.
Okay.
Yeah. I think right now, they have a .2 overload because they're quite a bit over that recommended number.
Okay. And I didn't, I remember years ago, I wasn't happy, I mean, I was kind of a persona non grata with a person in the cabinet who's no longer here. When I asked if there was a magic, some kind of a magic formula to figure that out, but it seems like you've got, maybe it's not a magic formula, but some kind of a way of looking at that.
Yeah, and REA will be, if that's something they're hearing concerns about, they'll bring to that to us on our weekly meeting, and we'll look at the numbers and see. But we don't have a certain cutoff. We try to look at the number, and sometimes, sometimes the teacher is willing to take more than the recommended number as opposed, or the principal wants that person to have an overload as opposed to having another .2 person in the building. So we try to work with everybody in that decision.
Ron, can you explain by definition, what an overload means?
Sure. If somebody, how we've done it since, and I've been here roughly three years, how we do that is if somebody is picking up at the secondary, if they're picking up an extra period, they will get .2 of their FTE in addition to their current contract. So if I'm teaching six periods instead of five, that we take their per diem and take it times .2. We do that by quarterly arrangement where every quarter, we will revisit it. If the numbers are still high, they get that. And then if somebody is over the 160 number, which happens from time to time, somebody might be at 165 or 161 students, and by contract, then we give them a .1 FTE overload.
Even if it's just one student?
Even if it's one student.
Thank you.
And then other budget processes. So we roll forward most of our non-staff budgets the same as they were and apply some factor of inflation to account for costs going up and things just costing more outside of the district. And, but we also look at different codes to see is there anywhere we can reduce on those, like utilities. We might not just roll that forward and assume 3%. Since we have an energy-saving initiative, we might try to trim that back a little bit and see if we can actually make that budget line item go down. We also look for other strategic initiatives that we've heard of or are wanting to start. And I threw up a couple examples there, like new bus routes. If we were to choose a busing option or a later start time next year and it costs more money, I'd consider that kind of a strategic initiative. That's something that we want to undertake that we haven't done in the past, and it's going to add to the busing budget by X, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then we look for reductions, and we always start outside of the classroom. We are constantly looking for ways, where can we trim around the edges that we aren't affecting teachers, paras, directly in front of kids? So looking through support departments, we're looking for those utility budgets, contracted services budgets, anything we can find to reduce if we need to, to try to keep the budget balanced.
A quick question on that. So would that include, say, there might be an initial capital cost for long-term savings? Or do you just strictly look at just cutting costs?
I'm trying to think if we've had an example of something where we've invested with a long-term goal of saving money. I don't know, Scott, if you can think of anything where we've spent money upfront to save money down the road?
No, just the contracted services that we use, maybe higher outside company to do work for. It's nothing.
I think that's very high level, what the budget, you know, kind of how it works as we're thinking through what we're going to propose to you.
So if there were strategic initiatives that were from the school board perspective, such as there's been discussion about school board salaries and how they haven't been adjusted since September 7th? The number is correct.
At what point during the yearly cycle would that need to be raised? I mean, the issue raised, not the...
Yeah. This is the perfect time for that because it will help us as we get down the road and we're trying to bring forward like a balanced budget to you. Rather know about it now than...
So in the, in the winter timeframe?
Yeah.
December, January, February?
Yep.
You talked about the reductions that were made outside the classroom. This is probably not fair to ask, over the past few years, what kind, what's the ballpark of those reductions that you've been able to save in the budget?
I feel like generally, year to year, it seems like we've been around that million-dollar marker where we've just been trimming away without even really making a big deal about it. You know, we've been trying to handle them as staff without having to make a big formal process and go through a multi-million dollar cut because we waited too long.
First of all, this is very scary for both of us. Melissa, you were reading my mind. My question was going to be, when would we address the line item? My question was gonna be, when would we address the line item that has $50,400 on it? And that would.
Code 112, school board salaries?
Yes, is that it, code 12? Yes, and I don't know if anybody is, on the board is interested in having this discussion. I know it's always very difficult when you talk about you're going to increase your salaries by 9 million percent, or whatever was recently discussed with another local government group. That was, so that, I guess that was more my question, as to whether, do we need to plan an agenda item for a discussion, if there's any interest in having a discussion about this? I mean, if we were looking at, you know, that our reserve was at like 6%, I would not even raise that issue at all, and we may decide to do nothing, but.
I would say, one, that's not our decision, that's the board will have to decide it, that's what the conversation wanna have.
Right.
And when John said that earlier, we know the better, because if you remember a few years ago, very, at the very last minute, we were told to continue with the Inside Out program, which is $120,000 that we didn't have in the budget, so we had to quickly cut to make up that 120 to do that. With over 80% of our budget tied into people, by that time of the year, we've already given them contracts for next year, so there's very little non-staff people money, so. If you wanna have that conversation, it's the sooner the better for us, so we know to build it into budget.
I mean, I would certainly not expect that the school board would be requesting an additional, what was that number, $120,000 to throw everybody off?
No, I wasn't applying that, I was just using this as an example.
I know, I know, I'm trying to tone it down a little. So I will leave that to whoever, who makes that decision, as to whether we wanna discuss it, or have it as an agenda item, if there's no interest in it, then there's no interest. And, we can't vote at a study session, but.
We don't vote at a study session. And as it hasn't come up yet, how many years?
1987?
Yeah, 1987 was the last time it was.
It hasn't come up in that late year, so I don't know how it's ever been discussed before. We are, we can all, like you did, resign, we could all give the head nod consensus, like, do we wanna have a short discussion of that now? Or do we wanna have some sort of separated agenda item coming up at a future board meeting? So is now, board members, is now a good time to have a discussion about that sort of thing?
But we can't, we can't make a decision at this board meeting, because it's a study session, right?
We can have a decision to discuss, though, right? Now or later?
We can't have a.
You can't come to a consensus that there's enough of you that want to have a public, at one of your business meetings, discussing about that, yes.
Or there may be people who.
Yes.
And we could make a decision whether it was at a study session to discuss, but then we'd actually have to have a formal resolution at a regular meeting, at some point, should we get there, okay?
And I don't know if we can have that discussion at this point, because it's not on the agenda for today?
It's part of the budget, it's a part of the budget, so.
It's a budget planning, so I think that, plus any other initiatives you wanna throw out there,
very in line.
Can be at least heard, and we can talk later if we need to.
So what was your question of us, Deborah?
Is there an appetite among board members to have a short conversation at this budget-planning study session about compensation? Knowing that many boards by statute do set and reset their compensation at the first meeting of the year at their organization?
When would be our next opportunity to have that conversation, if not tonight?
The next school board meeting?
At our study, at our next study session, which is, I don't know.
Then where are you going?
I'm going to the one with this. For, with MSBA.
January 28th meeting.
I think it would be, well, I mean, I guess if we're talking about next, it would be when we have a board meeting on January 28th, a board meeting on February 4th, a study session that's full on the 11th, and a board meeting on the 18th. So we do not have another study session on the calendar currently that has potentially an open slot to discuss that, that does not mean that we couldn't have a off-time slot, it does not, also does not mean that we couldn't discuss it at a regular board meeting. I don't see any restrictions on discussing it at a regular board meeting. We can put it as a in. Discussion item?
My input is that, you know, springing on everybody now isn't going to make it as productive of a conversation than if people had time to think about it. Also, the transparency of holding it at, the discussion at a board meeting, because as we know, it is a hot-button topic, and I think we want to be as transparent and thoughtful about the process as possible. My, my feeling would be at the next regularly scheduled board meeting.
I agree.
I would agree.
Agreed.
All right, so, the consensus is that we ask administration to put a information discussion item on the January 28th board meeting to discuss board compensation. All right, yes, okay, thank you.
Mr. Paulson, you mentioned at the beginning that this staffing allocation piece was the majority of the budget, and, but you also mentioned that beyond the decision process that goes into this, there's the allocation of the compensatory and title funding. But you also said in your five-year financial forecast that you're looking that that compensatory funding might be going down in later years. So, can you give us a sense of what some of that compensatory and title money gets used for?
Sure.
About how many positions are in play?
Other people know money question, besides just the money. It's really, the entire cabinet is involved in the budget, you know, John clicks the numbers, but.
That's all you just, I can just click numbers.
They'll give me more credit than they really need. Some use it to reduce class sizes, some use it to hire additional reading coach, math coach, social worker. It's a variety of positions that they use it for. We don't really get too much involved in how they use it. I mean, at least in the years I've been here, there's only been a few that we had some further conversation with that principal about that position that they were gonna fund or whatever. As far as the drop in that, it really has to do with our free and reduced percentage dropping. And I had conversations with, with other superintendents, and I know this is a hot topic for, especially St. Paul and Minneapolis, because theirs have dropped, this is the first year we've seen it drop, but they've seen a couple years of it. They have their belief on why that's dropping, and I don't know. But, and title's the same way, title's connected to free and reduced. That has a little more restrictions, it has to be an area of reading and math, whereas compensatory is more flexibility on how it can be used.
Is there any, on compensatory, do we retain any of that at the district level? Or is it all, is it all set?
Yes. Yes, I believe it was in the document. It was one of the, I think it was one of the Q and As, but it was a, maybe we didn't put that in there. But it's a percentage approximately in the 30% range that we're taking to fund counselors and social worker. Not all of our counselors, not all of our social workers, but it's at least a funding stream to get some of them paid for. And then the rest, we roll out to a site and let really the principal make the decision.
And we are required to set aside some.
Yes, there's a 3.5% this year needs to be set aside for extended time activities, and next year, by lot, goes to 5.5% has to be taken off and put for extended time activities.
Which you'll now define for us.
Yes, can somebody else define extended time activity? I think of extended time as outside of the normal school day, so it would be, something could be an after-school program, or it could be, yep, or it could be a summer school type of education opportunity, so, outside of the normal day.
And just a question about that, are only the kids who are on free and reduced eligible for that extended time, or is that open to any kid in the school?
No, it is not based on just free and reduced, it would be, usually, there's probably some sort of qualification, and it might be education-based, education needs.
I'm writing, so I'm trying to like write and keep my eye out, so if somebody has a question or comment going in without being recognized.
I have a question about the school board target per class. I remember from, is, no, I remember from last year's conversation that the class size was last set in 2010, and it was when we last did the budget reductions, and you're not making any recommendations to change it for next year. Under what circumstances would we think about changing?
Well, we had a money tree that grew a lot of money. I think there was a few years ago that the board wanted us to look at pumping, reducing class size, and it was, it was an over $3 million increase in our budget to do that. It was, it wasn't, it was only reducing by a couple students, it wasn't a big reduction, but I knew, it's been, a few years ago, we did price it out, and it was just way too much.
Would we even have the facilities to be able to do that?
Not right now.
I didn't think so.
It was three years, but.
But on that note, maybe it is a discussion to have again in three years.
We couldn't lower class sizes, but we could increase adult student ratio, correct? Without more buildings?
In other words, like, I mean, we do that with some of our classes anyway that, where we have a teacher.
Yeah, yeah, say for example, John mentioned how we look at third grade enrollment in a building. If their number say you need three sections, but you don't have an extra room, we give them an option to hire another teacher. I think one year, one school hired an extra teacher, and they spent time in both classrooms. Most cases, the principals choose to hire paras for the same amount of dollars and put them in both rooms.
I had priced this out, just by the way, if we had taken this year's staffing and we had lowered class sizes by two, or three, two or three?
Yeah.
It was $3.64 million, because we'd need 39 more teachers to drop students by three in every elementary section.
And at what point do you need to make a decision about any additional transportation costs? Should we go to a later start time?
To me, the best time again is right about now, definitely before May, when we bring that, would be good. We've already got that kind of in our wheelhouse, it's on a list, because we assume that conversation is coming very soon.
Okay, that was all I needed to know.
I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure I understood, so are we, are we gonna have that conversation before May?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
Either end of this month or next month.
Okay. Don't wanna miss that. Okay. The teacher staffing for secondary, you explained how they do it for the high school with the, based on how kids register. But are the middle school students required to take all the subjects that are listed in the staffing allocation document? So, those are really allocated based on the number of students? They don't really have a choice to say, well, we're not gonna offer this, everybody have. Okay.
I think there's a little flexibility on the type of music.
Yes.
You know, can he vote always, I mean, but you do have to offer, you know.
End range to, like, we do a ratio, so they get a set FTE for the building. Now, they might wanna run social studies just a little bit larger, so they can bring down English or something, you know. The principal still has that flexibility to make a choice like that.
So the ratio gives the foundation, and then they figure out what works for their building?
So this is a philosophical question. Since you mentioned that. I really appreciate that we have, that we give our sites a lot of autonomy, and, and, you know, they can choose how they're gonna spend some money, which I think is great, because we know that, you know, our schools are so different, and our students really do have their own kind of personality and culture. But how do we make sure that, that they don't get kitty wongos, how about that for a fundraiser? You know, that they're really not, you know, even in a town this size, you know, that I might have a, say, well, my kid gets blah, 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 whatever that might be, it could be a class size issue, it could be a reading support, it could be whatever, versus somewhere across town. So how would we make sure that they're not, you know, that they're within a range of difference?
I think that's probably the whole purpose of us going to standard. Every building, we're gonna get this type of administration, fair control of that. Prior to that, we probably had more situations like that. So, but some, some, I mean, just because, you know, for example, last year we had an elementary building between compensatory and title, had $1.1 million of extra dollars, extra money.
For that building?
Beyond, beyond what we gave them. So, if you just look at that school and compare it to another school that had the same size, it's gonna look a little different, but it's because of the funding. But the funding is dedicated because of the types of students you're serving, you should have additional funding to address that.
Right, and by law, that funding can't be used to reduce the amount that they would be allocated otherwise, isn't that correct?
That would be the way you should do it.
I don't remember the exact number, I was reading something that there, not, every state has compensatory type funding, they all have, since title is federal, that's across the country. But, for example, in Iowa, there isn't compensatory funding. And I know when I was there, we were actually having conversations, do we allocate more general fund to those schools than some of the others? And what kind of conversations do you have at that level? Whereas we're lucky that we have a state that has a specific funding source to address that.
And then, this is not quite a philosophical question then, but do principals vary in terms of the kinds of conversations they have with their staff? I mean, I'm assuming that there's gonna be some staff involvement and not.
Typically, they involve their leadership team, and I do know we have one principal that, who was, had a small school, so the entire staff were part of the process, but. Some all, some, they have whatever they call their leadership group, they call it different things at that school. I mean, not, principal even, that they had to make a cut. The entire staff had to turn it on like, ooh, that was a little uncomfortable. I mean, who, I'm gonna recommend that, you, but not me, we're gonna cut the heat as that, so.
Well, I mean, are there, are, 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 does building seniority come into play for some of that, or not?
I don't know.
Okay. Or just, or seniority?
If building A cuts a second grade teacher, then you got the contract, the senior don't.
Right, but I mean.
That may impact other, other schools.
Right, but, I mean, within that, like that grade level, that example that you gave, if you had, say, three second grade teachers and you had to go down to two, then you would, you have that.
Yep, lead senior going in thing, and the name, they may be able to bump somebody else in another building, and.
It gets to be fun.
Para likes that time of the year.
So I have a process question for the chair and the superintendent. So, as school board, part of our job is to reflect the priorities and the concerns of our community, and so, the balance between, you know, kind of getting involved at the lower level when I hear a concern about a certain school and the way that their staff versus the, the school board's job of delegating. So if I hear, and I'll just give the example, because I can't think of a good way to explain it. So, I've heard concerns from community members, as well as staff, about. So, I've heard concerns from community members as well as staff about ALC staffing. And we had the question earlier about there isn't a standing staffing allocation. For instance, they don't have music teachers there. So, if I wanted to reflect the concerns I'm hearing, what is the best process to do that? Do we have a conversation, do I send an email? If it's just coming from one board member, then how do the other board members say, I have that concern as well? What do we do there?
Well, I think any, I mean, I think that goes back to protocols, right? And so, if you're, if you're hearing something, whatever, it comes back to superintendent. And then superintendent, if he had an answer to that, a very specific answer, then that can go back out, out to everyone about the, however that's, the staffing is done.
It's not really a question though, it's a reflection of a priority of how we're spending our money and what we're spending on. So it's not a, I'd like to, I'd like to have the same, reflecting what I'm hearing from the community as to how we should be spending staffing dollars.
I'm not sure I understand your question, but I do want to make a comment, kind of back to what we were talking about in our policy governance stuff earlier. And, and I don't know if you, if the two of you sat in our study session back when Dennis Seabrook did some training. If you remember, he talked about, there was that groups of people and underlying, and parents were one of the groups. And he said, as a parent, they're, they're looking, what's best for my child, which they should. And when I'm working with parents, I tell them, that, that's your job as a parent, you should. And then, even I think principals were under that line. They're, even though we work hard to have them be system thinkers, but they really focus on their kids in their building and what's best for my building. People above the line, which is us and the board, is our job is, yes, we take that information, but our job is to look at what's best for the entire system. And a lot of concerns and questions that come to you, you have to remember that that's coming from a very narrow lens, that that's their.
Interestingly, these were not from parents, these are from general community members.
I think for me, it's the, it's the getting, it's the, it's the need for more information when a concern is raised. And so, to, so I'll give, give an example, and maybe I'm not quite getting to answer your question, but it's what it's making me think about. So this morning at family engagement, and I don't know if this came up in, in K-Pal with group with you, but we were talking about the gold model, the kindergarten.
Assessment.
Assessment?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're talking about that, and it was really interesting, because K-Pal was saying, when you say to a parent, your child is, your child is having trouble calming themselves. Well, what does that mean, right? As a parent, you're like, what's developmentally appropriate with calming yourself, right? So, I'm only reflecting that, because I thought that was a really interesting conversation. But, when someone says, if someone were to say to me, I'm concerned about the staffing at ALC, I would want to know more specifically what the concern is, because without knowing what the concern is, is it, well, I guess you sort of said that there's no need. But if someone just said, well, I don't think there's enough adults in the building, that's one thing. Versus, they're not offering something, then that's, that's more of like a problematic thing. And so, I think without that, without knowing more, it would be hard to respond to. Does that?
Well, I mean, if we're distilling, distilling it down to the issue, that's one thing, I'm talking about the process. So, and for example, if I said, I think that there should be a music person staffed at ALC, and I'm just using this as an example, because that's a concern I've heard from the community. How would I take input from the community, which I feel is my job, and deliver that to the administration to consider in their budget decisions? Do I do it just one person, which, as I've heard in the past, well, that's just one person's notion, and it doesn't hold any weight unless it's a majority of the board? So then, does that mean we have to have a discussion about it? I mean, I'm, I'm caught between these two things.
If, if your example, if it had music, it's a quick answer, they have music. We can tell you who the staff member does it, I don't know who it is now, they don't, they don't have music.
They don't have music.
I remember the guy played the guitar, walked in the hall.
That was a grant.
There's grants, and which is who I'm hearing the concerns from, are people involved in the granting process.
Can I interject for a minute? So, this morning, I know Deborah was there, we, I went to the second semester art show at the ALC and had, we had the same conversation with the same young lady. And, I mean, what she did was incredibly amazing, she built a doll. One of the things that she did was, she went and she bought false eyelashes and then cut them so that they would fit on this doll. I mean, a lot of work, but she was very passionate about it. But all of that is provided by grant money. So, there was an art, like an artist in residence for that period of time. I don't know where the grant money came, I don't know if we can count on those kinds of grants to deliver an exceptional art program to the kids. I mean, it's, so it's not like they're, maybe they're, they're not getting the kind of music that other students have in their traditional schools. And, you know, I'm a former music teacher, so this is a little hard for me to say. But they are getting other kinds of experiences in the arts. And with the example that you gave, once again, that was from a grant. So, if we know that the grants are going to be fairly reliable, we can continue like that. But, I mean, imagine if we had to say, well, we have to pay for our math instruction with a grant. I mean, it's bad enough not knowing what we're getting from the state. But to depend on people to write grants and that's how we fund our programs is difficult. So, I mean, I think that ALC is difficult to staff, but I understand your, your question is, you know, maybe other people aren't aware that there is no regular music program at the ALC and that the music they do have is funded by grants. So you might know this, and bring it forward, and you're just one person, but there's the possibility that if everybody on the board knew about it, there might be more than one person that had that particular concern and would want to address it. And what I hear you saying is, how do we get there?
Well, but on the other hand, I don't know that we need to discuss every small little thing in a, in a group like this, if we can pass a concern on.
So then, I would say what you, what I, what I hear you asking is, not that we need to know right this moment, how are, how is the curricular program for ALC set up, established, decided?
That's part of it, it's not just a question I have though, it's me wondering what the channels are for me to pass along the concerns I'm hearing from the community about very specific issues like this.
Well, we have protocol for that.
But knowing then that they're going to be considered as part of the budget process, because do we need to have other board members say, yes, that's a priority I share as well?
And maybe, I mean, the board could conceivably say, we would like to have some kind of a music teacher that's not funded by grant money, whether it's a one point oh or a fraction of a one point oh would be determined by something, I don't know. But, so your question is, how, how do we get from that concern to actually having a discussion about whether or not we want to even consider putting it in the budget?
I don't know, we need a discussion. My question is, if I send on a concern that I believe represents what I'm hearing in the community, is there a process for then saying, you know, am I, is it going to be, thank you for sharing this with us? Or how do I know if it's going to be considered? Or how do I know if we need to have four people who say that, but then the other six board members will never hear it, so they can't weigh in on it? I just, I still don't understand, if I give input as one board member, it's just one board member and it could be set aside with no consideration?
If I may, it seems to me that two things here, I'm not sure that either one of them is important, but it's better practice. But if we hear something we think a superintendent should know, we can just send them an email, this is whatever, you know, whatever. And then if there's a concern coming from a community member or a parent about a particular school, then we direct that parent to talk to the administrator. And if the administrator says, yeah, you know what, you're right, then the administrator will contact the superintendent.
So then there's no place for the board member to reflect the priorities of the community in the process?
Well, I think that's why we contact the superintendent, but, and I hear what you're saying was, my concern is that the board then is determining the priorities for a school based on comments from some people, and maybe a few people, but I don't think that's our job to make the decision, this school needs a music teacher. I think that, that need needs to come from that school. And certainly, the staff can contact the superintendent, but typically, they go through their administrator.
But don't you think that the, the fact that they're writing grants for these programs already represents that they feel a need for their school?
Absolutely, and it sounds to me like maybe they're getting what they, what they need. I, the thing is, I don't know, and I, I just don't feel comfortable that the board takes that on. If, you know, if the staff are saying, we need more, then they go to their building administrator and that person then can bring that to the district and saying, you've got to do better for us. I just, I, I'm concerned about stepping into building decisions.
I am too, which is why I asked the process for how does a school board member represent the priorities of the community? Where, how does that fit in the process?
I think what's difficult is defining community. How many people bringing this concern do you warrant that the community wants this to happen? What people need to understand is, the L, the L C cannot offer everything that you can get in the other three high schools. That's, they just, they can't. Their goal is to offer what's required by state for kids to graduate. We're forced in that area, L C looks for ways to offer beyond, experiences for the students beyond what's required by the state. It's not required by the state to graduate from high school to take, to have, have that, it's, it's not. At middle school, you have to, but at the high school, it's not required. So, I, I think it's difficult that, and I don't know if you could come down to a set number. Two of them made a comment earlier about, I think this is what you're referencing, that when twenty-two hundred people take part in the thought exchange on creating the graduate profile, that's what the community told us. They didn't specifically say music and all that, they, this is the skills that we want our kids to have. So, for me, the challenge is, is it six people, is it twenty, what is it? Because there could, I could find you a hundred that say, you know, I'm okay with my child not having music at ALC. And then, the same question you're asking, the same question you asked the person from the School Board Association when we were having that training. And it goes down to trust, you trust your superintendent when you bring something that's going to be considered. Will they do it, maybe not? A specific example, we can't afford to offer it, and it's not required for kids to graduate, so that's why it's not funded. But, we have staff who find ways to provide, outside of the graduate requirements, experiences for students that attend the ALC.
Well, but that's the point, you say we can't afford it, but isn't that down to the school board to set the priorities of what we can afford or can't afford? I mean, if we go back to the, the retreat that we just had in the book study we just had, it talks about, that's the role of the, the school board to.
This book not is implying that you go down that specific, where you're saying, you have to offer this class. It will go to, these are the ends we expect you to meet, and how you get there is up to you. It's not, that's why I said, I'm not for sure if y'all really want to go to the Carver model. Because Carver model would not have, we would not be having this conversation.
I could put into policy, I could recommend a policy that the board could adopt that says all students, no matter what school they're at, receives formal music instruction. That would be a policy.
At what cost? What would we cut in order to do that? We cut this, so then, are those same, or different, six or average, how many people reach out to you, say, now, oh no, we want this in? So then, you do, then you do a policy to add that, so then we cut something else to pay for that.
I understand, but that's the role of the board, to say, we don't have enough money to go everywhere, we're listening to the priorities of our community, our community wants this more than it wants this, for instance. I mean, I'm not, I'm not here to get into a discussion about ALC and music. I'm here to get into a discussion about the board's role in how we're spending the money, and with a limited pot of money, how we decide what's more important or less important. I feel it's the board's role to reflect the priorities of the community, and I'm not aware of a process for us to do so. I don't know, maybe I'm the only one who is concerned with reflecting the priorities of the community.
I feel like, I feel like this is, is one of the, back to the statute versus policy versus practicality pieces. And, you know, thinking about when you look at your, your budget, philosophically, your budget should be matched to your strategic plan. If, if these are our graduate profile, if these are the skills we want our students, then that's where we have to go. However, we know that our budget is very limited, and if our general fund is X amount, and eighty percent of our general fund is just staffing for not even a whole lot of extras, then there's not a lot left, I feel like to be that sort of aspirational to meet those, you know, whatever those things are that we want for our students. I just don't feel like there's a lot of room.
I agree.
Would you agree with that?
And I, I agree that we don't have the money to do everything, but I, I agree with Dr. Amson in the conversation about the priorities of the district tied to the budget. So, we're, we're starting with the numbers, right? I, and we, the strategic plan conversation we had was months ago. I think it would help us and our community to have those two pieces side by side, so we can see how the strategic plan pieces that we all agreed to, nodded to at the board meeting, how they tie to the numbers that we choose. And then we, if, if we have to ask those aspirational questions, then we've got the facts side by side, and we can say, well, we're meeting the needs of our students this way. It would be nice to be able to meet the needs of our students here, but we've established these priorities. And, and eventually, we'll get into that cycle, as you bring the strategic plan back to us and you give us an update on how it's going, and you talk about the second year, right? It'll, it'll start to come together. But, I don't, I think if we don't set aside the time to say, remember, these were the priorities we set, and here's where we're at with our numbers, and these are the things that we think could also meet the needs of our students, but they're not in the priorities we, we set. Maybe they might be in the priorities we set for next time. But, we, we, we don't start with the, the global conversation of tying all those pieces together. I don't want to go back to the retreat conversation, but that's, that's to me, the, in my mind, the linkage. I mean, I love, I love the process of knowing where the decisions are made as to how to allocate the funds, but I like to connect it back to what our bigger picture is.
I think maybe one example that sort of touches on what you said was last, I think it was last year, when a decision was made to hire more mental health counselors and social workers, and what kinds of adjustments might you have to be making in the budget?
What might be covered with compensatory dollars and all of that? Because that need rose from the community of adults who work in those buildings. But it also, I think, fitted to our, our strategic plan in terms of what we do, what we do for kids in terms of their, you know, their mental health and how they can initiate it is. But we don't, we don't, we haven't systematically looked at it the way that you described on a very high level, which I think would, I think would be helpful.
And can I ask one more question tied to Melissa's thought? It, it's a general thought about grants. It's a general thought about grants. We, we know that there are grants happening throughout the district, and we know that when the money for the grants, like you said, runs out, it's supposed to pay for itself. Do we have any systematic way of looking at the grants that we have at the district at the end of the cycle and say, is this something we really want to find more money for? Is this something we want to try to support to go forward? Or, or even just to acknowledge, we would, but we can't?
Yes, we actually had one today.
And then you just look for maybe a secondary grant or other sources of money, or like, how does that conversation go?
In some cases, you look for a different funding source, or it ends up general fund, and you say, what do you have to cut then to continue keeping this program? And in some cases, once the grant funding went, it, it was determined that, yeah, it'd be nice, but not at the expense of cutting this to keep that going.
So you're always internally setting the priorities of balancing off what might be nice but can't be afforded. And I think it's fair to say, because of the way our schools are funded, it's not like we have this list sitting off to the side, and suddenly a pot of money is going to come where we can fund them all. It's really in the moment if the funds are available. It, it's hard, it's hard to circle back and say, what could we fund if we suddenly had another percent on the formula, kind of thing.
When you think about even our, our efforts in regards to mental health, many of our positions are partially funded by different grants. So, you know, it's a priority, and we do what we can with the money we have, but then we're constantly looking at, what else can we get to supplement that? And then, if it works out to be something that, and it's, that's just the parents and the citizens of the students saying, we really need this, then, as the superintendent said, then we start to balance and look at...
Yes, I would also add too, it's not just, does it fit what we're trying to accomplish, but did we get the bang for the buck that we, even though it was grant funded, but didn't, you know? We look at that.
Right, that was, that was going to be my, my next question, and I think is tied into, is it the ends where we look at an initiative or whatever it is we've been doing at the end of the year and say, how did this go? Do we need to make adjustments to make it go better? Or if this was really a train wreck and we're going to just get rid of it? I mean, we don't have train wrecks in this district, but, you know, or is this something that we'd really like to expand, and how do we, how do we figure out how to pay for it?
The example we talked about today, Kathy, was the resuming specialist that we added. And based on what we've heard from students in the, in the listening sessions, it told us, we have to continue those, so they're on our general fund wish list, but we made a commitment that we're going to keep them, so if it can't come general fund, is there another funding source? We've looked at another grant opportunity. If not, we'll have to cut something to pay for those.
Because they were grants last year?
Grant and title.
Grant and title. Okay. Perfect, because that was one of my questions.
I have another thought, and I think we touched on it during the earlier book study session, in terms of how, how we have community listening sessions, and the board has discussed sporadically, should we be having regular listening sessions so that we can? And the book, not that we're going to do the book, but the recommendation here is that you have a specific topic or topics, rather than saying, oh, come in and talk about whatever you want. And that would give us the opportunity to see, is there community interest? Going back to your example, if we had a listening session, you know, all of a sudden 500 people showed up and said, why don't we have music at ALC as a regular class? Then that's something we would listen to and take back to the superintendent and said, this is what, what we're hearing. The danger in that, of course, I don't know, maybe it's not a danger, is, and Mike, you've talked about it, how the, certain members of the community might see a board member as their go-to person, you know? So, okay, we're going to be talking about this issue, now I'm going to just see if I can drum up support because it's my issue. And then it's hard to separate out, is this really an issue that 500 people passionately have had kind of on their own, or is it, hey, you're my friend, come to this meeting, and this is what I want to have done? So I think that there's some complexities, and there's some, some kind of judgment that we have to use when we evaluate all of that. We can always schedule individual meetings with the superintendent, or groups of three to say, you know, this is what we heard, and this is, there's a lot of people who are saying this. I think it's probably a crackpot idea, but I just wanted you to know about it, and this is what's happening. I mean, Mike, the question I've always asked you is, if I hear something, do you want to know about it? And you always say yes.
I think, we haven't had the experience of here since I've been here, but I'm assuming probably in 2010, when the district cut $9 million out of the budget. If this, if this was typical of most districts, I've been in other districts where we've made substantial cuts, and, you know, you'll have a crowd of a dozen people come in and say, don't cut the orchestra program, and then next in line, you'll have another dozen that says, don't eliminate the middle school exploratory. I mean, I'm assuming you had that. So the challenge for us, all of us in here, is, is that the voice of the community? Or is it, in my experience, has been, my kid's an orchestra, so I don't want to cut, or I'm an orchestra person, or...
I won't argue with you.
No, I'm just saying, I, you have, that's, that's tough for us, because we have to weigh, is this truly represent the community? And then, then you factor in, okay, we say it's, this is community saying, can we, can we pay for it? Can we do it? And then what do we cut to, to pay for that? So, and that's why I asked earlier about how do you, it's a challenge, what is, what is the, the number that says this is really our, our community? I think, my experience has been, many times you hear the voice of those who are middle, upper-middle class or higher, you don't typically hear a lot of, yeah, marginalized population. Even in, when we do the citizen voice things on the referendum, I don't, I would say we probably didn't get a good representation from that group. So I think we have to caution ourselves that we don't say the community, because is it really the community, or is it who has a, the ability to engage with us? So that, that's, and that's tough. That's a tough to determine.
I think, I think there were some board members who were on the, on reduction, budget reduction committee. Melissa, were you on that? Kathy, were you ever on that? Deborah, you were on one once, weren't you? Gee? Oh, Mark? Don?
No, that's your point.
I, I, my, well, my point, my point is, is I think that they, I mean, those members were chosen, there was like a formula for how they were chosen, or could anybody be on? I mean, I know I'm taxing your brains to think back that far.
I think it was a combination. I think there were people who were recommended, and then I think there were people who are like, I really care about this, I'd like to participate.
Okay, because I remember that was in this, was it the spring or the fall of 2010?
I think I was maybe recommended by my building principal.
Okay, I, no, I remember when I was running for school board, and I wasn't on that committee, but I did listen to quite a few of them, and it, I mean, it's a very interesting process where...
Fortunately, we don't have to cut.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, but I think it's a question, it's a process question of, how do you get the community involved? How do you have a true representation of the community? What can we as board members do to pull some of these groups in, to ask them? I mean, I know a lot of you work on...
Well, isn't that in our strategic plan? Isn't that one of our, our tasks that the board has been tasked with in our, in our role in the strategic plan, especially with equity? So, is that in our, is that in our parking lot of topics to schedule a study session for?
But that's a good point. If we aren't hearing from a representational segment of the population, then does that reflect on us for not setting up those opportunities?
Yes.
Well, I don't think opportunity is the, the key word, right? We always have opportunity to get more feedback in different ways. You know, superintendent has, I think, been, communication has been good, you know, the thought exchange, the listening sessions. I've heard you even use thought exchange with the students.
Yeah.
It's your school board, your student listening post, and so I think it's a balance of, no matter what the topic is, and if the topic is really on budget, you know, and we've already expressed that we appreciate the, the building autonomy to make some funding decisions. We do like to hear from the community, but the ways in which we do that maybe are less heard on budget topics. We know that, you've mentioned you have a, cabinet has a wish list and things that they consider, and I certainly imagine that you dream big for our students like all we do, and I really appreciate hearing about efficiencies and potential revenues and potential other things, because this is, obviously, this is so much of what we do, but it's that really complex thing that we're, you know, the ball that we're all holding. And I think about how many hours and iterations of the budget that John and his staff do, and obviously input from Cabinet and other members. I just think that, you know, it may not be perfect, we may not always get it right, but I am grateful for the time that you've put into that. Other comments on this overarching process that we do?
I want to build on something that Director Slusner said at our last board meeting, when we were talking about the upcoming building, and asked the question whether there was enough staff, and it was discussed that that's being part of the conversation. But I, speaking for myself, I remember this from last year, where you came to us and you said, we need more here because we're trying to accomplish this. And I, I hope that we're making it clear that we want to hear that, right? If you, if you really feel that there has to be something that is going to drive, or is driven by the needs of the students, that it's something that the board would like to hear, support, discuss, you know, let's figure out a way to afford it, if, if we really think it's something that the students need.
If I may, I'll offer this as a reason. Jet lag, 16 hours, nine-hour time difference. That being said, John, you had, it was an I word in terms of priorities or...
Initiatives.
Initiative. Well, some type of, well, initiative works, okay. Something you didn't anticipate, but it's an initiative that may require more dollars. And...
Strategic initiatives.
Strategic initiatives. And, and so as I listened to Kathy, you know, that, I just remembered what you said regarding that, there is space for that, and superintendent, cabinet, you guys have in the past, well, it's been your past practice to inform the board of those strategic initiatives, and I have no reason to not think that you will not continue to do that. So thank you in advance for that. It, it certainly, I think, relieves me of anticipating what might be or could be, knowing that you guys are already on top of that. And finally, it is important to, not that we reach a threshold number of X amount of people constitutes community, and as a, one who ran last campaign cycle on accessibility, accountability to the electorate, I'm very much aware of that sense of burden of and need to be responsive to citizen request. And as a member of a underrepresented group, I'll say, it's easy at times for me to say, well, the community says, because I've spoken with other people of color, and be it one person, two, three, four, five, I'm now referencing, the community says, and the community is wondering. And I'm learning now that it's okay to say, you know, I spoke to a individual, and they had concerns regarding this, and that individual maybe spoke to a few other individuals who share a similar point of view, but in no way says I'd represent the community. And I think really, as a board member, how we best potentially encourage community voice is to encourage those members, those individuals, to come and participate in the public sessions of our board meetings. Then we have an opportunity to actually give them the voice they desire, and not necessarily think that their only mechanism of voice is through an email to us or a conversation with us. They actually are able to appear before the board as a whole and communicate their concern. So that then relieves us individually of that, oh, heavy burden of trying to be responsive to both the community. And it's good to be back. Sad laughing, Lee.
That's, that's a jet lag topic.
Anything else, board members? Anything else you want to share with us? Thank you for your hard work. I'm sorry that it's...
I was going to say, only just begun, but I guess it's not...
It's constantly going, right?
Oh, sorry, one more question. So the strategic allocations, I keep changing the name of the document, budget allocations, staffing allocation for this coming year, are we going to see that at our next information session? Are we going to see it before then?
We are still working on that.
Right.
I guess our intent was not to have that part of the package when we bring the budget for approval.
It was really helpful last year. We asked for it last year, and it was, I mean, it was helpful for me to take that when I saw the big numbers. I mean, I'm assuming it's just going to be based on last year's, and then some numbers will change, right? I mean, so...
And if I may, Madam Chair, so this is where, when I served as chair, I would oftentimes feel like wondering, I heard what Director Nathan said, and is it simply that single voice of what she said, or do you, were you looking for consensus, Kathy? Because I think absence that, it's just a, I think was nice, and I'd like to see it, and it may not be seen.
Well, for me, it's a change in process. We got it last year when we had all the budget documents, and there was a decision made not to get it. You were thinking not to give it this year. And I'm just wondering why, if we got it before, and there was no harm, no fault, and I assume none of the data went out, or, you know, was released, or whatever, why that piece of information wouldn't be available to us?
And again, Chair, Seelinger, so are you asking for...
I can respond to that, Don. I, I guess I don't remember providing it, but if we did last year, we can do that. I guess, I thought your question was, at our next study session, would you get it?
No, no, at the next time, we're going to talk about the budget.
It'll be May 26th when we come in.
I, I misunderstood your question.
Yep.
I thought you were wanting it at our next study session.
I like seeing all my numbers together.
Yeah, that's why I said, that's my point, not yet.
So, we'd have to be excited with John's interpretation of observing events. We need to help each other be more clear about what is being asked for and what is...
And timing, and timing.
I'll take responsibility, I didn't understand what you were saying. That's my fault.
Yeah.
Jet lag.
That's true.
Yes, you're saying that it will be provided in May when we come back.
We can certainly put it in board docs as an attachment to our...
Is that something that would be in, in...
Is that something that would be in, in the administrative section, or the regular section?
That's a good question.
I mean, that's up to you.
So I...
I don't care how we get it. Just that we do. Password protected. All right.
I would, could, I just point out, so I think it was an important thing that we talked around the compensatory thing, 1.1 million dollars is our funding cut for next year. So as we start these staffing meetings, tough decisions will be made. There are going to be reductions of 1.1 million dollars somewhere throughout the system. So if things start coming up, that's why, that's...
I'm glad you brought that up, because I think the feedback you gave us last year was that it would be, it would have been nice to know that we reduced media and increased the, the staffing prior to, we can do that, but there's a lot of, things have to happen in a specific timeframe, you know? Let's say, today we would have made a decision on, we're going to reduce this to pay for this. That wouldn't be communicated to staff until a certain point in the process. So we would probably inform you closer to that date and expect extreme confidence, because we would rather they hear it from their supervisor than someone else.
Right.
So we're going to take that feedback and do that.
I think you're absolutely right, and the corollary to that is, we would rather hear it from you than read, than get it in an email, or a barrage of emails, or read it in the newspaper, or whatever. I know, the timing is, is tough.
That question reminded me of one I wanted to ask earlier, that there are reductions happening. And I know it's not this simple, but if somebody looked at the charts that were in our PowerPoint tonight and said, this year our expenditures were 246.4 million, and next year 239.4 million, it looks like we're making $5 million in cuts. How would you easily explain that to somebody?
So, and we were talking about this at Cabinet today, too, that the current year budget includes kind of one-time money, carryover money from last year, like the sale of the MSB building. That money's in there and allocated to be spent this year. It might, or might not be spent, but once we've spent the money from the MSB building, you only spend it one time.
So we're not really making cuts?
Yeah.
In the sustainable part of our budget, the sustainable part is staying pretty much.
Correct.
So the, the reduction comes from a category that was never intended to be sustainable.
On this chart, yes, it's more the one-time, it's the dedicated funds, funded balance, one-time use types of stuff. And then, again, I don't think we've finalized what we would recommend yet as some of the ongoing things that might need to be adjusted.
But we don't want people to look and say, we're making $5 million.
Absolutely not.
That's my point.
Yeah, for clarity, if it was just broken out as something separate for those carryover funds, it would be much clearer. I've struggled with a way to find a show that, to make that a little bit...
Yes.
So I, I do want to preface what I said earlier about, the example I gave you were, I would call, district cuts. With our compensatory going down over a million dollars, it could be this teacher in building A, it could be this, this, that's going to be, I think what we communicate to you is budget cuts that we've made at, at the district level, like the media express list, and increasing the stacking ratio to pay for that. That's what we communicate. I guess it'd be difficult for us to name specific, because even if you get to the point where it may be teacher A in building B, but once you get through the seniority and all that stuff, that teacher's now in building C, so it's really teacher in building H that's getting reduced, so, but we can communicate with you ones that are made at the district level. And I think those are the ones that were concerned that were brought to you.
But we might get a concern from someone who doesn't understand that it's a compensatory cut versus a district cut, and if we have that question, we will ask it of you that you can perhaps clarify. Great.
So is, can any effort be made to make sure that, we can't make sure, encourage or make it easier for people to fill out those forms to apply for free and reduced lunch? Like, can it be sent, maybe you're already doing this, and it's sent home with every single family at the beginning?
Yeah, we really stepped it up the last couple of years, but we talked even today, this morning, is there even more that we can do?
Could we have a workshop? Like, if you want help filling out your forms, come tonight at 7:00 PM or something like that?
We could. I mean, we provide many opportunities to give application. There's a belief, I'm not saying there's any facts, but there's a belief, and some superintendents I talked to is because of the state of immigration in our country now, some families are reluctant to fill out any kind of government form.
Gosh, that's...
I don't know if that's true here, and why we saw a decline. It could also be a reflection that our, we have a lot of jobs in our community that a lot of communities don't have, too. So, I don't know.
Surprise. I just wanted to go back to a comment. I think I heard you make, within your question there, about we will not be making cuts. And I would just caution that kind of language, because compensatories going down, there may be this for that kind of adjustments. John's using that word adjustment, might be a positive, might be a negative. But to put out that language, that we won't be making cuts...
That's a good point, too. So we are making cuts, but we aren't making cuts.
$5 million.
We're reality, reality.
Strategic reallocation, I believe was your term last year. Is there any, one more question on free and reduced lunch? Is there any connection between knowing what the poverty rate is in our area versus how many people we should have signed up for free and reduced lunch? Has anybody done that?
I was actually wondering that, too. That's going to tell you, or the city, what their numbers are.
Right. I mean, what, like, what's a reasonable target, right? Like, we, we say we have, we have this many people on free and reduced lunch, and we think it's because we have a population not signing up, but really, what's the difference?
I was literally just asking, John, that if we know what percentage we're capturing.
And Carla gave me those percentages earlier today. It was our economic indicator.
Right.
I want to see...
That's where we are. That was where our economic indicator was last year to this year. And I believe, without having any numbers to back it up, that we are under where we should be, in terms of the number in our community that would meet that qualification, and how many of the forms we have turned in.
Okay.
That's pretty solid.
Right.
What we, what we don't know is why we are going down, because it does, again, I don't have the numbers, but it, it appears that, that poverty level is going up in percentage in our community.
Right.
And yet, we have gone down.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a match, but why that is, as the superintendent said, we don't know. There's a lot of factors that could go into that. And we always, we're looking all the time at how we can get to the populations that may, for whatever reason, either not know how to fill out the form, don't feel comfortable filling out the form, to get there and support them in that process.
Who has access to that information? Once they fill out the form?
It's very narrow.
Very few.
Federally controlled.
I don't.
No, I, I wouldn't want it either, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not asking for it, I just, it's a word of caution for people who might be afraid to fill it out, because everyone will know, or it will be known over here, if they could understand how narrow those parameters are, that you fill out the form, and it goes here, done.
Well, I think that folks who are closely with our families know that, and are communicating that.
Good.
Is there anything else on, anyway, any other questions? Any other comments from John?
Other than to say thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have something to say? Because you're putting your pen out, so I'm not sure.
Oh, sorry.
You're putting your pen out.
Thanks to the cabinet.
Yeah, thanks, guys.